Amazing, the props, everything about it is so cool. But I can't show you any of it. We're here with Local 33 to give you a behind-the-scenes look. Check it out.
It's Oscar Week in Los Angeles. Los Angeles is the best place in the world for a major event like this. And quite frankly, it's based on something very simple: experience.
Local 33 is your main labor support here at the Oscars. We've been doing this job for 50-plus years. We can't thank the Academy enough and the city of Los Angeles for keeping this event here in Los Angeles.
Local 33 and all of the other unions that are part of this massive production and this glamorous production, we all work together as a team to get it done, no matter what. As they say, "The show must go on." We broadcast live at 5 o'clock on Sunday, so, you know, no matter what, it has to happen.
Our office works hand-in-hand with all of the relevant unions that do this work that keeps middle-class families thriving here in California.
I've been with Local 33 for 44 years. I've worked hard, I've worked long hours, but I will retire in three years and I will be smiling for the rest of my life.
We look out for one another, we protect each other, and we actually work as a family.
I like to think of our men and women as Swiss Army knives. They have the tool for everything to have your show and your production successful. Come show night, there will be closer to 200 stage technicians on show night, and we will also have approximately 125 more stage technicians out on Hollywood Boulevard attending the red carpet and making sure that's a successful event as well.
For the show, I hand out the trophies.
We are the stewards of the Oscar trophies themselves, which is very interesting.
I register the serial numbers with them, and then they go out.
We're just the best place to be for the entire industry because we are the industry.
It's a modern exhibition that's steeped in tradition. Rashid Goel shows us a new exhibit at the Chinese-American Museum, where you'll be seeing things in a whole new light.
What you may see through your eyes may be different from what I see, but we are all seeing featured pieces of Lightscapes, an innovative light-based exhibition that blends traditional Chinese landscape paintings with new technologies, and it's at the Chinese-American Museum.
I think even with the traditional paintings, they were meant to be very sensory-producing. This one, though, really hits you in the face as our two artists interpret it, the experience of landscape painting.
Lightscapes features works from Taiwan-born Nick Dong and Woo Chi Sung. Chi Sung transforms daily objects and phenomena into poetic imagery, while Dong's goal is to engage audiences with an immersive experience, and this is one I enjoyed stepping into. This exhibition is meant to be experienced individually. Some of the themes include self-reflection, meditation, and serenity. As you can tell from the looks of this place and even hear the sounds, it is definitely very peaceful. And all I can say is, well, I'm in a blissful place. And these pieces here are actually suspended in the air as they move with motion sensors.
They both have this sense that not only should art be current, but they should be open for everyone to enjoy and to interpret on their own. And I think what we're seeing in their products now is how they feel art should be.
Lightscapes was organized by the Chinese-American Museum in partnership with the Ministry of Culture, Republic of China, and the Taiwan Academy in Los Angeles. And if you haven't been to the Chinese-American Museum, it's worth visiting.
We're more of the experiences of the people who stayed here when the Chinese Exclusion Act was legislated that kept Chinese for decades out of the United States. And so the museum was to talk about and educate the general public about that aspect of American history, of California history, and about L.A. history.
Lightscapes exhibition will run through November 10th.
Admission is free. For more information on the exhibit and museum, you can go to the museum's website at camla.org. Deciding where to go on your next vacation isn't as easy as it sounds. That's why thousands of travelers flock to the Travel and Adventure Show at the L.A. Convention Center to get ideas, tips, and inspiration for their next trip, and there was plenty to choose from.
So Travel and Adventure Show is the first stop you need to make on your next vacation because you're going to explore the whole entire world here all under one roof. You're going to meet tons of destinations that are not on your bucket list, and you're going to find new ones that you may have never thought of visiting before. We have over 4,000 destination experts who are on hand to help you find, plan, book, and personalize your next trip at a price you're not going to find anywhere else.
We come to the travel show every year just to see what's new and what people are offering, and it's fun for us because we live in L.A.
We're looking at different kinds of travel, actually. We're thinking about full-time RV travel, and we're just kind of trying to figure out what's out there for us, and we thought, hey, maybe we can find something here.
For us in Los Angeles, this is the gateway to the Cook Islands. This is a gateway to go into a destination where you're flying nonstop to a totally non-commercialized destination. And for us to showcase our culture here, it's important. We bring our string band, we bring our dancers from the Cook Islands, give us the opportunity to showcase our culture, showcase our destination.
We've been in L.A. for 14 years now, and 2020 is going to be our 15th anniversary. We have a big party, so make sure to come see us in 2020.
We'd be crazy to try and review all 40-plus food stalls in downtown's popular Grand Central Market, so we'll pick a couple while giving a taste of what the new owners have in store. Gil Reyes has more.
They say Los Angeles is the land of the beautiful people, and though the entertainment industry is definitely a big part of that, the real reason for L.A.'s beauty is the diversity of its people. So many different types of beautiful people tasting so many different types of beautiful and tasty cuisines. And if you're talking about diverse food options, then you have to be talking about downtown L.A.'s Grand Central Market.
No place in Los Angeles has this many cultural food options under one roof. Downtown's Grand Central Market is home to some 40 vendors and counting, including Wexler's Deli.
Bagels and smoked fish, great pastrami and corned beef sandwiches. And it's one of the things that we actually love about Jewish delis is it's one of the cuisines in America that sort of transcended its roots of just-for-Jewish people and is actually one of those great American cuisines.
Co-owner Michael Wexler and his crew take pride in their must-try pastrami sandwich, the MacArthur Park, and take pride in being part of this ever-changing, melting pot of a market.
It's a hodgepodge of the new L.A., and I think a lot of what L.A. wants to be and the current conversation in L.A. of, you know, what's great about our neighborhoods? What do we want our communal spaces to be? How do we want to reflect our culture in our shared spaces?
Looking at what a lot of the needs and wants are from a consumer perspective, looking at the flow of foot traffic.
Creative director Aaron Mavion tells us what the market's new owners have in store. Langdon Street Capital bought out longtime owners, the Yellen family, about a year ago.
So the stall behind me, for example, is one that isn't being used right now, but it gives us the opportunity to, at times, do short-term leasing, so to bring in a pop-up, per se. We want to take into consideration people who have a great story to tell that are connected to Los Angeles, that have an entrepreneurial spirit.
Opening in Grand Central Market this month is La Frutaria, selling exotic Mexican fruit salads and shakes. After 102 years in downtown, the market is also seeking historic designation from the city while maintaining its immigrant vibe.
My mom came from El Salvador, so she fled the Civil War.
Paul Serrano's family fled war-torn El Salvador to open Sarita's Papusaria in 1998. We recommend the Revuelta, a papuza made of pork, beans, and cheese, but of course, that's just one option in L.A.'s diverse Grand Central Market.
You can enjoy papusas, you can go enjoy sticky rice.
Barbecue over there, Horse Thief 2, you got Egg Club right here in the front, you know, you got every, you can choose whatever you want. That's great.
The market has a few spaces available for vendors who make a good fit. For leasing info, log onto grandcentralmarket.com. Plenty of puppets, puppeteers, and kids were on hand for the fifth annual Bob Baker Day held at L.A. State Historic Park. It was a celebration of a man whose legacy continues to bring so much joy to the community.
Today is the Bob Baker Celebration, and it's a really lovely place to get to come and hang out with a bunch of puppets and meet new friends.
It's been a full-on, day-on festival of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
I love puppets. In fact, my mom would go to Mexico and get me the Mexican puppets, and they were hanging all over my room, so I've always really liked them, and I'm glad my kids like it, too.
In a lot of cases, this is a child's first theatrical experience, kind of seeing a show, seeing sung and dance. It's a gateway to the whole world of culture and communication and theater.
Well, Bob Baker is a fixture on the L.A. scene on top of just the artistry of puppetry and the beauty and the fun and the joy that it brings everybody. Perpetuating that history and celebrating L.A. history is super important to us. It's a reflection of L.A. It's a cross-section of all socioeconomic backgrounds and ethnic backgrounds are a representative of Los Angeles.
I absolutely want to limit screen time and devices, and this just opens our eyes, makes the world seem bright and magical.
Illegal pot shops in L.A. may soon be going dark. A new temporary housing shelter is approved, and a local business is recognized for helping green the environment. All this and City B.
L.A. City Councilwomen Nuri Martinez and Monica Rodriguez are ready to flip the switch and cut off utilities to L.A. marijuana dispensaries operating without a license. The city council approved the new ordinance by a 13-to-zero vote. Once enacted, hundreds of illegal pot shops will literally go dark. In another unanimous vote, the L.A. City Council approved Councilmember Jose Wezar's motion for an urgently needed temporary homeless shelter. Funded by Measure H funds, the motion will provide housing and emergency services for 115 homeless residents near Paloma Street in downtown Los Angeles. And moving toward a greener L.A., the city of L.A. and L.A. Sanitation honor downtown L.A. Auto Group's six dealerships with Gold Star Environmental Certification. Since partnering with Resticla, the dealerships have reduced their landfill waste by a whopping 73%.
It's off the charts for someone this early and this quickly.
L.A.'s Chinatown lit up in a dazzling display of fireworks, ushering in the 41st Annual Firecracker Run and Bike Ride, one of the largest and longest-running Chinese New Year charity runs in the nation.
Happy New Year!
It's the 41st annual of the Chinatown Firecracker Event. You got folks who are going to do 41 miles today all the way to Sierra Madre and come back here to the heart of Los Angeles, right here in Chinatown.
I'm doing the 40 miles for the first time. Good way to start the Chinese New Year. Here we go.
It's important because proceeds from this event go back into the community.
Castle or Lumenter School, Solano Lumenter School, in and around the benefits, the people who live and work in Chinatown, it's a great thing.
Thank you all for coming out to celebrate the year of the gaymas.
To bring Los Angeles together. When we do that, we become stronger as a city and as a state.
Come dressed as your favorite Disney character for a Harry Potter crossover event. Check out a new exhibit honoring a prolific black composer, and enjoy a panel discussion on African-American contributions in L.A. All this and things to do.
Halloween comes early this year at the Walt's Wizarding World Second Annual Cosplay Crossover Event. Come dressed as your favorite Disney character as if they've lived in the realm of Harry Potter. All crossovers involving Disney properties are welcome. Marvel, Star Wars, Pixar, you name it. Mash up your favorite character costumes at Walt's Wizarding World Second Annual Cosplay Crossover Event, happening Saturday, March 9th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. The event takes place at Universal Studios Hollywood, 100 Universal City Plaza. For more details, check out facebook.com/events. The William Grant Still Art Center is set to unveil their 11th Annual African-American Composer's Exhibition. This year's program is entitled "Music is Art, Music is Philosophy, Music is History: The Legacy of Dr. William Grant Still." This exhibition will be in partnership with the Los Angeles Philharmonic, get swept up in the symphonies and legacy of William Grant Still at the William Grant Still Art Center. The opening reception happens Saturday, March 16th. For more details, call 323-734-1165. The Los Angeles Public Library invites you to the March edition of L.A. Made, a cultural series featuring free performances and conversations with local entertainers at libraries throughout the city. This month's program is entitled "Black Angelino Trailblazer Families." L.A. Made is happening Sunday, March 10th, beginning at 2:00 p.m. in the Mark Taper Auditorium of the Central Library. For ticket information, visit lapl.org/lamade. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Umayma Rashid. From all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week.
Good morning, good morning. Today is Wednesday, March 6th. I want to welcome you all to City Hall. This council, this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Blumenfeld Bonin, Buscain Ocedio, Harris Dawson, Weezer Karetz, Krikorian Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez Rue Smith, Wesson. Eleven members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Bonin moves. Weezer seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Smith moves. And Rue seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, item one is an item noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on that item.
Okay, then, continue.
Items two through sixteen are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee reports for items two and sixteen have been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, let's prepare to, uh, to vote. I don't see any specials, so let's, uh, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you, next.
And, Mr. President, the ordinances for items three and four will be held over to March 19th unless reconsidered with twelve members present.
Okay, we should get there. Remind me when we, if we hit that number, okay? Continue.
Item seventeen is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before this body. Do you have cards on this item?
There are no cards on this item.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, that brings us where?
Items eighteen and nineteen are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Yeah, for now, we will hold those items on the desk. Continue.
And, Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, I am looking for Mr. O'Farrell. Uh, there he is. And, uh, Mr. City Attorney, there are no multiple comments on file, so let's close that section.
Very good.
Uh, again, I want to see if Mr. O'Farrell, would you like to start with your presentation? Then the floor is yours.
Thank you. We're all going to join together. Good morning. How's it going? Good to see you. Uh, this year, I am pleased to celebrate the Department of Cultural Affairs Big Read Program in Los Angeles and encourage the enjoyment and the magic of reading for all ages across our great city. Excuse me. The Big Read is an initiative of the National Endowment for the Arts in association with Arts Midwest, designed to restore reading to the center of American culture. Excuse me. The Department of Cultural Affairs marks its eleventh year of receiving a grant from the NEA to produce the Big Read Program in Los Angeles with the work of Ethiopian-American writer Dinaw Mangestu. The Big Read has become a catalyst for community participation, civic engagement, and a celebration of Los Angeles' culture through literature and art. The Department of Cultural Affairs has created one of the nation's most dynamic, uh, book groups that serves thousands of students in LAUSD and adults in our communities annually. Uh, and many of you probably participated in the Dr. Seuss event last week on his, I believe it was one hundred and twentieth birthday, if I'm not mistaken, at some of our schools. And at these events, we can always encourage young people to discover the magic and the wonder of reading and get them really hooked to the pleasures of reading at a very young age. And I talk about how that opens up a whole world of possibilities in a young person's mind. We have with us Daniel Tariqah, Department of Cultural Affairs Assistant General Manager, joins us today to say a few words. Daniel?
Thank you, Councilman. I've spent a lot of time here in these chambers as alleged deputy and a field deputy, and I'm proud to be here representing the department today. Cultural Affairs is once again proud to present the Big Read Program in LA. I want to thank the National Endowment for the Arts for another grant award to produce a successful initiative now in its eleventh year. I also want to thank our community and cultural partners. And to our sister agency, the Los Angeles Public Library, thank you for your continued dedication and for the tremendous outreach to young people, adults, and seniors. And lastly, thank you to our DCA team, Leslie Thomas, Elizabeth Maureen, and Dale Madison, for all of your hard work. Reading helps us to have engaged democracy and offer Angelinos of all ages the opportunity to explore and engage in great literary works of art to build connection and understanding. This year's book is no exception, "The Beautiful Things That Heaven Bears." Thank you so much.
Thanks, Daniel. And colleagues, I neglected to mention that I'm joined by our colleague, David Rue. The torch has been passed, David, as the Chair of Arts, Entertainment, Parks, and LA River Committee, which also oversees policy for our, our public library and the Department of Cultural Affairs. So I invite the Chair of the committee, David Rue, to say a few words.
Thank you, Mitch. And don't forget, you're still Vice Chair and still on the committee. So we did not lose our great Councilmember, O'Farrell, who's been a strong champion of, of, uh, of culture and art as well as, um, uh, the commission, I mean, the committee. But, good morning, everybody, and I really want to thank not just Councilmember Mitchell O'Farrell, but the Department of Cultural Affairs and all the fantastic students that are here today. Let's give the students a round of applause. You guys want to stand? Do you recognize, why don't all the students stand? See yourself on TV. All right.
You'd be on TMZ later.
I also want to thank Daniel Tariqah, the Assistant General Manager of the Department of Cultural Affairs, which we just heard from, Janice Pober with Sony Pictures, John Zabel, our City Librarian with the Los Angeles Public Libraries, all of our teachers, parents, and community groups who champion literacy every day. And as a Councilmember of Council District Four, I am very lucky to represent the many hubs of art, culture, and history. From modern art to classic cars, craft and folk art, art to the tar pits, and soon, a museum on motion pictures, Council District Four is where people come across the, from across the world to expand their horizons, connect to new worlds, and achieve a deeper, deeper understanding of humanity. I want to recognize one of this year's key Big Read partners, who is just on the other side of Council District Four, in Council District Ten. They are with us here today, and that's the Little Ethiopio Cultural and Resource Center. This year's book, "The Beautiful Things That Heaven Bears," is written by Ethiopian-American author Dinaw Mangestu. Dinaw is an Ethiopian immigrant, and his novel is about political refugees living in America and explores the familiar themes of many Angelinos: of identity, displacement, and finding home in a new land. "The Beautiful Things That Heaven Bears" tells a very specific story, but through this, through his beautiful writing and powerful storytelling, Dinaw connects readers to universal questions about self and sacrifice. This is the power of a good book. No matter who we are or what we look like, reading connects us to universal truths through the limitless power of empathy. Literature, literature, and poetry has the power to travel through space and time. Books, once written, can inspire new ideas and imagination every time someone reads it. So I want to celebrate the writers, poets, and authors who, through their work, ignite the flame of inspiration and empathy in readers across the globe. I also want to recognize and applaud the many Angelinos that are here with us today who celebrate literature, who understand its power to connect us, and who know that without someone to read it, a book has no meaning. We need books, and we need readers, which is why I'm so encouraged by all the young people here today. I want to encourage them, not just to absorb all the books they can, but to also tell their story. Write their great novel or poem, and perhaps, one day, we'll be celebrating them here in the City Council. Finally, I want to encourage everyone here to get involved with Big Read. There are events taking place across our city, including exhibits, live readings, and film screenings, and to also pick up a book that you've, that you've been meaning to read, because you never know which book will give you that new idea or give you that new perspective. Thank you.
Thank you so much, David. Many years ago now, I had the great pleasure of bonding with City Librarian John Zabel, and we bonded over our mutual love of reading. I was a latchkey kid, my brother and sisters, uh, and I, especially myself, when my parents were at work, I spent my life at school libraries, at the public library. And to all of the young people here, if you are a nerd or a geek and you love to read, and sometimes you get criticized for it because you always have your nose buried in a book, that was me. And that's A-OK, because what that did, for someone who, you know, we struggled financially at the margins, but the world of reading opened up the entire universe of possibility for me. I would go home, I would be in bed at night with a flashlight while my brother was asleep on the upper bunk, and I would be reading books even then. To this day, I read everything I can get my hands on, whether it's on my iPhone, or whether it's at three in the morning last night when I was finishing a book that, because I had insomnia. Reading is a wonderful, incredible journey that can be lifelong. So, John Zabel, I hope I've teed it up for you to say a few words, our wonderful City Librarian, John Zabel.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much, Councilmember, and to the entire City Council for your great, ongoing support of all of our libraries in Los Angeles. It's always a great day when we're able to celebrate reading, celebrate books at our libraries, and remind the good people of the City of Los Angeles that there are six million books on the shelves of our seventy-three libraries, and millions of eBooks and audiobooks there, all for them. We have a great library system here in LA, and it's always wonderful to be here and to celebrate the Big Read. And I want to thank our colleagues at the Department of Cultural Affairs for the great job they do in coordinating this citywide initiative each year. We're always enthusiastic about the selection of the book. This year, I think, all of us at the Los Angeles Public Library are particularly enthusiastic about the title, "The Beautiful Things That Heaven Bears" by Dinaw Mangestu. Uh, it's a wonderful, perfect LA book. It is a book that looks at immigration, identity, what gentrification and urban renewal really means, and is a wonderful book to have conversations about, and what better place to do that than in our public libraries? We have thirty-eight libraries participating, programs all across the city. We have almost a thousand books to distribute, hundreds more available to check out at our libraries. Uh, and the book, and the Big Read each year, always serves as a wonderful platform to highlight all of the services that we provide at the library. And this book in particular, I think, is a great opportunity to let Angelinos know that the public library is a place where new Americans and immigrants can come to our six new American centers and six of our libraries, and seventy-three new Americans' welcome stations to get information about immigration and, uh, becoming part of, of this incredible community. Uh, want to thank the great staff of the Los Angeles Public Library, who embrace this program, who make it a success every year, and want to particularly highlight Principal Librarian Diane Olivo Posner, who's with us today. Thank you, Diane. She does a great job coordinating this and leading this effort. Uh, and again, particularly to our high school students in the room and to all young people in LA. LA Public Library is for you. We welcome everyone, and we look forward to seeing everyone at these wonderful Big Read programs this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Since the very first Big Read Program eleven years ago, Sony Pictures has supported the program with a generous donation, several generous donations. Sony's support emphasizes how critical creative expression and imagination are in the development and education of our children. And every now and again, great stories actually make really great films. What we have tonight, or today, representing Sony Pictures is Catherine Runo, and we welcome Catherine to say a few words from Sony Pictures.
Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you, Ms. Bruno, for joining us.
I was, I was told that Catherine was here instead. Okay. Good morning. Uh, my name is Catherine Rotuno, and I have the privilege and honor to introduce my boss, and I don't think she needs much of an introduction, Ms. Janice Pober, who has been leading this program for twenty-plus years, so.
Well, um, it is a thrill to be here again, um, to say thank you to all of you at the city, at the Department of Cultural Affairs, for what I think is probably the single most brilliant public-private partnership in the city. It has been over two decades that Sony Pictures Entertainment, CalArts CAP Program, and the City of Los Angeles has been bringing after-school animation training to the youth of our city after school in five city arts facilities. We knew there was a need out there. We did not really know how to reach those young people whose latent talent was exactly what we were looking for, to fill jobs in the creative economy, and in this partnership, we've been able to do that with incredible success. We're just so proud to have been able to be a part of something that enriches the lives of students, parents, families, and certainly, our industry around the city. I do have to call out my incredible partners in this effort, Leslie Thomas with the City of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs. Where are you?
I'm ready.
There you go. And the incredible Glenna Avila with CalArts Community, our partnership. The three of us have been working in lockstep with one another since the moment this program began. So on behalf of all of us, me, Kat Rotuno, Sony Pictures Entertainment, I thank you for your incredible investment in this program. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Just give her a round of applause.
Thank you, Janice and Catherine. We're so happy that you could join us this morning. As has been mentioned, we have some wonderful Big Read schools with us today, and they are Lincoln High School and Cortinez High School in Council District One, and we've got Whitman, uh, I'm sorry, Whitman High School in Council District Five.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, you can cheer as loud as you want. Franklin High School in Council District Six. And we have Mendez High School in Council District Fourteen. All right. So we recognize all of you students for your commitment of, to learning and reading. The Department of Cultural Affairs Big Read Program in Los Angeles partners with numerous community and cultural organizations to encourage reading through a variety of related free activities throughout the city. That's the beauty of libraries. They're free. Some partners include Grand Park, the Anne Douglas Center for Women, Los Angeles Mission, the Los Angeles County Natural History Museum, CalArts Community Arts Program, as well as our own Department of Cultural Affairs Neighborhood Arts and Cultural Centers. Therefore, we all encourage Los Angeles to participate in the many free events throughout the city that celebrate literature, books, authors, and stories through the Department of Cultural Affairs Big Read Program in Los Angeles. So on that note, Mr. Rue and I would like to present a resolution to the groups for their accomplishments and their enthusiasm and passion for Big Read LA.
Come on. Who's gonna? Give them a big round of applause. Big Read LA, ladies and gentlemen, congratulations. Thank you.
Leslie, can you be seen?
Yeah.
Right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now that we have, um, members here, let's take items, let's reconsider items three and four. There are two ordinances. Um, let's open the roll for reconsideration, items three and four. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, items three and four are now before us. Let us open the roll. Close the vote. Tabulate, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Let's now take item number one. We got one speaker card on item number one, and with the name of N.A.U.Y. Item number one, we have one speaker. Please come forward. I don't see this individual. Is it Naui Martinez? Item number one. Okay, seeing none. So Madam Clerk, on item number one, I believe you have a clarification?
Uh, yes. The Department Building and Safety recommends that item one H.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Naui Martinez? No? Item one? Please come forward.
Necesita traducción?
Okay. Para numero uno?
I speak.
Oh, you do? Okay. You're here to speak on item number one, correct?
Yes, uh, property of three forty-three West Fifty-seventh Street.
Can you identify yourself, please?
My name is Naú Martinez.
Fantastic. Welcome. One minute.
Hi, yes, uh, I'm here to, uh, contest the, the proposed lien on my property. Um, my name is Naú Martinez, and I would respectfully request that you guys deny that. Uh, this is my primary residence. This is my home. I'm a commercial truck driver, and, uh, when I'm not working, this is the place where I come home and spend time with my family, my kids. I've, I've tried several attempts to, uh... I, oh, I've tried several attempts to, uh, resolve this issue with, uh, Department of Building and Safety with no, no success. Putting a lien on my home is not going to fix the solution, is not going to fix the problem. Instead, it's just going to create a bigger financial burden and a, uh, an emotional hardship for myself and my family. And, uh, that's it for right now. Really, I want to appreciate you guys for listening to me, taking the time to hear me, and, uh, I appreciate everything you guys do for the city.
Okay, Mr. Martinez, what we'll do, um, we'll meet you at the roads for Mr. Price's office, and we'll continue this item until we figure this out. You okay with that, Mr. Price? We'll continue that, uh, item now for thirty days. Send that back.
And that would be continued then till April fifth.
Without objection. Thank you.
And then, Mr. President, also, item one H, there's a request to continue that to March twentieth.
Without objections. So ordered?
And then additionally, the Department of Building and Safety is recommending that items one D, I, and J be received and filed as the liens have been paid in full, and that the following liens be confirmed at the following reduced amounts. One A, B, C, and E at one thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-six cents, and one G at three thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents.
Without objection. That'll be the order. Let's now vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you. What's now before us? What's now before us?
Alright, so we're now moving into items, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, 18, 19. So before we actually go into closed session, Mr. City Attorney, it is my understanding that public comment technically has been satisfied on these issues.
That is correct, Mr. President.
But I think that what it would be appropriate is that we should at least reopen it for a bit, for some limited time. I know that we have individuals here, I believe on both sides, so we'll do the best we can to be fair and to give as many people an opportunity to speak as we can. So I'm going to look at 20 minutes, and we'll try to rotate it, those supportive, those In fact, you know what, Mr. O'Farrow? I'm going to start with, I've reopened public comment on this, did you want to say something prior to public comment, or do you want to wait until we're ready to go into closed session?
I would rather wait, especially since we've heard this in committee. And so just let the public comment take hold, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so can I have Don Steyer and General Dogan and Jessica Law, Shayla Myers, please come forward. One second, sir, I want to line them up. I got one more person, or do I? Okay, well, identify yourself.
Don Steyer.
Go ahead.
I'm General Counsel for CCEA, and since 1985, I've represented the downtown property owners in matters such as this. We're here today to ask you to litigate, not capitulate, and to find outside counsel to assist the city attorney in providing more effective representation going forward. The Mitchell case has been declared by the court to be related to the Levon case. So if you look at the language of Levon case, please remember what they wrote. Do not mischaracterize our decision as confirming a right to store personal property on public sidewalks, nor as an excuse for the city to abdicate in its responsibilities to the citizens for their health and their safety. Remember going forward, if you choose to settle, you have a situation that's a citywide proposition, and if it affects the environment, it also must satisfy SEQA, which it does not. Thank you.
Thank you, General. Okay, let's keep it there. Yes, sir.
General Dogan, Decolonizer with LA Can, and I am here today with other members of our Civil and Human Rights Committee, and we stand in support of the city's settlement Carl Mitchell case to date. There's a lot of criminal misconception of Carl Mitchell. Many people are here today because they got an email or a flyer instructing them to come to speak out against Carl Mitchell, because the city was voting to allow homeless people the right to store excessive property on city streets, and the police and the sanitation can't do nothing about it, which is all totally false. The Mitchell injunction does nothing more than ensure homeless people right to properties protected by ensuring the following protocols are carried out when the city clean the streets. One, make sure the city leave notices. Two, make sure if a person is not there, that their property is stored away. And three, that the city leave a notice, right? Anything other than that is a lie about Mitchell. And what's more, is the problem here is you got council members like you, Jose Wezar, that's knowing intentionally falsifying information just so you can have favoritism with the business improvement issue. That's why the FBI is out of your office.
Okay, General, let me, come on, come on. Alright, Ms. Law. And then if I could, before she starts, if I could then have Pancake, John Mercer, and Adam Rice, yes?
Hi, I'm Jessica Law, President and CEO of the Central City Association, just want to clarify that we are not represented by Don Steyer, just a point of clarification. I am here today with our coalition of social service providers and community leaders to ask you to reject a settlement that treats downtown differently. As you know, the Homelessness and Poverty Committee has discussed this in three closed session hearings, with more than 150 people showing up to voice their concerns. Because these discussions have been confidential, the public has not learned about the settlement and how it will impact the entire city. Before taking action, we ask that you consider releasing a draft of the settlement terms to allow the public to weigh in. We ask that you take the time to examine Mitchell comprehensively. Any action you take will have far-reaching implications, it needs to be considered within the framework of other litigation and existing policies. This is a complicated issue, and we support the city receiving assistance from outside counsel to help develop a comprehensive strategy. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I could get Pancake next. Hold, hold, sir, sir. Pancake, come on, I'm trying to do one for one again, so you're next. And then John, you're John.
Good morning, City Council President Herb Weston, North City Council Member. I'm Mr. Pancake of LA Can, and proposing the settlement of the Mitchell case. It's my take that we should stop harassment of the homeless population. These are people who need help and no more setbacks inflicted upon them by the system. The Mitchell injunction has nothing to do with shelter beds, but settling the case will allow the city to focus on building housing instead of spending more taxpayer money on legal fees. Let's settle it today, all power to the people!
Thank you. You'll break my microphone, Pancake. Come on, sir, identify yourself.
Good morning, my name's John Misery, I'm the CEO of The People Concern, and we have operated a residential program in the heart of Skid Row for almost 45 years. I'm here to ask the council to consider two things, as you think about the Mitchell settlement. The first is that we shouldn't do nothing that criminalizes people experiencing homelessness, that people have a right to their personal property, their clothing, their medications, their medical equipment, their documents, anything that will help them move forward in their lives. That's very different than unfettered amounts of debris that are causing unhealthy situations for people on the streets. The second is, whatever the decision is, as goes downtown, so will the rest of the city be bound by those requirements. It's going to be very hard for the city to argue that the rules are different in the San Fernando Valley or on the west side than they are in downtown. That has very important long-term policy implications. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please identify. In fact, are you Mr. Rice?
I am.
Okay, so if I could get Lynn Horn and Jed Periot. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Councilmen. As a former constituent of Mr. Harris Dawson, as a current constituent of Mr. Bonin, one thing that is common across this city, not only here in Skid Row, is people who have lived in this city for 30, 40 years, sleeping on the streets, sleeping on their cars, on the same houses that they grew up in, sometimes in front of the same house that their family used to own. Now, the business district can come up here and peddle lies to you. Everyone on this council is aware of exactly what Mitchell does. So please do not pretend that we think that you're fooled. Homeless people do have a right to property. It is not an unfettered access to the sidewalk. This is suggestive and salacious language simply to get you to vote with them. You notice, they're only ready to fight it once they're off the case and you let them off. Now they're ready to go, now they're ready to waste city money. But when it was their money on the line, they have nothing to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Next speaker, please. Identify yourself, let's try to stay in order.
Good morning, City Council Members, my name is Lou Hornum, the President of CBRE in this part of the world. LA's been mired in a cycle of lawsuits that have dictated the city policy around homelessness. We're ready today to ask that we break that cycle. From my point of view, homeless is the most complex and important issue that the city faces. We believe that receiving clarity from this judge is a big step forward for the city. We also believe that we need a strategy that ensures that every individual, especially those in the most vulnerable population, receive the full benefit of our Constitution. We need to approach, an approach that does not accept the status quo. I believe this is the most important thing that we're facing right now in our entire community. Downtown has become a challenging area for the homeless, and we need to get this to be not the standard. We need a policy that does not eliminate a standard in just one city or one part of our community. We need to share with this judge what we've done with H and HHH, and what the private community is now contributing to move forward in this effort. We ask you not to settle on the terms that impede this progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Mr. Periot.
Good morning, Jed Periot with the Democratic Socialists of America, Los Angeles. So to say that you would want to take Mitchell to trial is to say that you don't believe unhoused people have constitutional rights to the Fourth Amendment. Is that what you all believe, City Council Members? That unhoused people, people, the thousands who are forced to live in the street, who have nowhere else to go, no shelter beds, no permanent housing currently, you believe they don't have any rights to property, to survive? That's what you're saying if you say you want to take it to trial. That's what the business community is here to tell you, because they don't care about real solutions. They're here to talk about erasing the homeless from downtown in the name of gentrification and their profits. That's what they're here to say. Do you stand with them in their mission for profit? You must settle Mitchell, settle it citywide, if you believe in truly helping people, and you must start listening to folks with lived experience and advocates for real solutions, one of which is permanent housing, and secondly, which is increased public health infrastructure and decriminalization.
Thank you. Thank you. If I can now get Thea, okay, Thea Evangelis, Sukari Finley, Tanya Boykin, please come
Yes? I'm Thea Evangelis with the law firm of Gibson, Dunn &amp; Crutcher in downtown Los Angeles. I've been advising pro bono the Central City Association and their coalition. I'm here today to provide an outside legal perspective on this important case. 5611 struck a balance between protecting constitutional property rights and providing safe public spaces, but just two days after it passed, it was effectively blocked because the court was appropriately concerned about allegations of problematic city cleanups, and issued a temporary injunction effectively removing that law's limits on property kept on the street that was based on things that happened before 5611. 5611 has never been tested in court, and now is not the time to abandon it through the current settlement, which would tie the city's hands and do away with this hard work in forming that policy. Judge Otero's orders make clear that a broad settlement that gives up city powers makes no sense. His order was narrow and preliminary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, good morning. My name is Chief Sukari Finley, and I'm here on behalf of the homeless and the underserved. All the Mitchell injunction does is spell out what the city can and cannot do when the city wants to clean up the sidewalks. And when they arrest people who are homeless, giving unhoused people notice about street cleaning and telling them where they can retrieve their property, when they're released from jail is literally the least the city can do for people who are homeless. There have been occasions where they've done the cleaning and they have killed people. So I think you should take this into consideration. This is not the proper way to deal with taxpayers' money, it should be building housing. I yield.
Thank you. So after Ms. Boykin, if we could get Joanna, Susan, Mike, Dory, and Craig Roberts, if you guys could begin to make your way to the center. Welcome, identify yourself.
Good morning, my name is Tanya Boykin, and I am the Chief Operating Officer of the Weingart Center. In addition to being Chief Operating Officer, I'm a native Los Angelino and a seven-year resident of the downtown community. It's no secret that the city is in the middle of a humanitarian crisis, and I would like to commend this council for the efforts they've done thus far with Prop. H, Measure H, HHH, and Bridge to Home. But we are at an inflection point. As a steward of a 623-bed interim facility, it is my responsibility to ensure that the individuals who have come in out of the streets are safe. Most recently, we lost one of our major programs, our veterans program of 10 years, and we're told by the VA that the conditions, external and outside, were so grave that they chose to cancel that program and move those individuals out of our city. Additionally, because of the great issues that we are facing from a physical point of view for both the clients, oops.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Craig Roberts, 15-year resident in Skid Row. I'm something close to astonished at the opposition to giving people on Skid Row who happen to be houseless their constitutional rights of the Fourth Amendment to be protected in their property as well as their persons. The people, meaning the gentrifiers, the developers, their lawyers, and their plunkies, who oppose the near holy concept of due process for poor people are exposing themselves for what they are. People who don't care about homeless people, people who don't care about the poor, people who only care about money, okay? And you on the city council need to vote in favor of settling this lawsuit so that you could save face while you're under investigation by the FBI. It'd be a public relations win for you. Thank you.
Next speaker, please, identify yourself. Yes.
Hi, my name's Michael Dore, I'm a partner at Gibson Dunn and a former federal prosecutor. The reason the city lost the preliminary injunction in the Mitchell case is because it was alleged that police were seizing people's medicine and throwing it away. The reason the city lost the Levon case in the Ninth Circuit is because it was alleged that property was being deemed abandoned, seized, and immediately disposed of. The reason the city of Boise lost in that case in the Ninth Circuit is because the city was arresting people and throwing them in jail for sleeping on the streets. It's no surprise that those courts ruled as they did, but I can tell you from personal experience, having tried multiple jury trials in front of them, that the federal judge in this case is fair and he's reasonable. You can see that in the court's order, where it says it does not want to place an onerous burden on the city, where it says that its order is narrow, and it acknowledges the power that the city has to address health issues immediately. 5611 addresses these issues. It provides the notice, it follows the roadmap that the court set out that the city should follow to pass constitutional tests. The people should have noticed, there should be no secret settlement here, and the city should know the terms of what's being done in its name. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, oh wow, it's very loud. Joanna Swan, Democratic Socialists of America, Los Angeles, here to say, if you want to talk about incarceration, arrests of homeless people went up 30, over 31% in the last seven years, with I believe 14,000 arrests of unhoused folk in 2016 alone. So yeah, I would ask that you continue to please uphold the constitutional rights of all Angelenos and settle Mitchell. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. So now if I could get Carol Schatz, Don Garza, Tara DeVino, Divine. Hi, Carol.
Hi. The city cannot afford to settle this case. If you are to truly represent the best interests of Los Angeles and not just accede to the demands of a loud group of activists, the city must take a stand for health, safety, and decency. The city's position has consistently eroded from the Jones case to Levon and now Mitchell, each time giving up the future of safe and clean streets in a misguided attempt to buy temporary peace with the activists. That has to stop. You will not be able to confine this to Skid Row. Already the permanent encampments have spread across the entire city. This is not a solution to our homeless problem, but will only worsen the situation and encourage more dangerous street behavior. Settling this case on their terms will only continue the spread of misery, disease, and a deteriorating quality of life for all Angelenos and the homeless themselves.
Thank you. Don? Don.
Y'all pretty much said what I needed to say. To settle this case the way they want it settled is going to cost us another 10 or 11 years, like we did after the Jones case, just sitting on our butts and not creating any housing. If Carol wants to sue the city, she needs to do it all the way and not halfway. And that means sue the city for right to housing, not the right to live in the streets if we cannot afford to pay the rent. If you're going to do it, do it right, Carol. Stop doing it halfway. Sue for a sense of urgency. Sue for housing. Don't settle. Fight. Fight for my right to be able to live in housing and not in the street.
Next speaker. And Craig. Craig, Craig, I'm going to need one more from LA Can, one more speaker from LA Can to balance it out. Yes.
Tara DeVine, Venice Beach bid. In Venice, a woman named Shai lives on our streets. Shai is 15 months older than I. She loves fashion. She once lived in a market-rate apartment in President Wesson's district. I don't know what happened then, but I know a lot about how she lives now. Shai struggles with both mental illness and addiction. She uses alcohol, marijuana, meth, and possibly more. I strongly suspect she is exploited for sex work. Shai receives government assistance and is in the CES, but she refuses most help. She says she does not want to leave her possessions because they will be stolen. Shai's unique personal possessions were mostly lost or stolen a long time ago. She has an ID and a debit card we once helped her replace. But Shai is also a hoarder. Last week, she had a coat rack she called a Christmas tree. Sometimes she hides under mounds of trash bags. She stores her own waste.
Thank you. Now, Steve, before you come up, if I could get Hal Bastian, Kate Bartola, you guys come on up, and then Steve, I'm going to hold you for last. That'll balance it out, if that's okay. Welcome, sir. Identify yourself.
Good morning, Mr. President. My name is Hal Bastian. I'm a downtown resident, and I've been involved with the downtown Renaissance for 27 years. Rights are not just for one party, they're for everybody. All of us in this room care very much about the rights of mentally ill and homeless people. But their rights do not override the rights of 99.9% of us to be able to use the public realm in an unfettered way and without fear. Right now, there are homeless encampments on Second Street right across from City Hall. There's something wrong with that. You need to litigate this and take control of the public realm. The job of government is to control the public realm and public safety in homelessness, and that doesn't mean that we have to be mean or just worried about property rights here, but it's for everybody. So please do not settle the case. Have some courage, litigate it, because it's... There's nothing more mean than enabling people to kill themselves in public, and that's what's happening right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just keep it down. Just keep it down. Yes. And Steve to close. Yes, Kate.
Kate Bartolo, 23-year downtown stakeholder. When I think of the Mitchell case, I think of three things. One, I think of my sister, a diagnosed paranoid schizophrenic, who in years past, whenever she went off her meds, began hoarding an entire neighborhood full of trash. Secondly, I think of a person of indeterminate gender, because they are so emaciated, living in Skid Row, trying to bathe themselves naked amidst trash and squalor. And third, I think of the irony of the fact that we are all so aghast at the idea of how migrants are treated at the border and yet so complacent about the conditions in Skid Row and Skid Row adjacent, which are so much worse. We need housing, we need shelter, we need support services. We don't need an expansion of sidewalk rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, council members. My name is Steve Diaz, and I am with the Los Angeles Community Action Network, LA Can. The business community has done a great job at confusing this issue and making it seem that this is about citywide and that if you move for settlement, you're going to allow for encampments to go throughout the city of L.A. Let's be clear with ourselves. Encampments do not come because people have constitutional rights. Encampments come because of the lack of housing and the lack of affordability that exist in Los Angeles. What the Mitchell settlement does is it allows for, excuse me, to ensure that homeless folks in Skid Row are given ample notice when a street cleanup happens, so to ensure that they're able to move their personal belongings in a set time. Secondarily, it allows for property that is being, when an individual's arrested, it allows for that property to be stored, so that once someone comes out of the system, they have the opportunity and the beginnings of something to be able to get their feedback in their life together again. This is not about anything besides constitutional rights and the right to property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, what we've done is we reopened the hearing. We heard 20 people. I tried to balance it, 10 for, 10 against. So, Mr. City Attorney, this will conclude the hearing. If you feel as though that's...
Yes, Mr. President, that's fine.
Okay, so before we clear the room, I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, yes, so this, we will go into closed session hearing, and before we do, just to say, after listening to a lot of the testimony, both in committee and then today, I want everyone to understand that this is definitely not a pro-business, anti-homeless rights, nor vice versa. You can laugh all you want, but what we're handling is the very serious business of the scourge of people affected by homelessness. It's a very real issue. It's a serious issue, and the city is aligned in addressing it directly. And I think that it's not just the City Council, it's not just city leadership, it's the people of Los Angeles who voted overwhelmingly for HHH a couple of years ago, and then in the county, H. We're addressing that not nearly quick enough for anyone, but we are aggressively pursuing these amenities, the bridge housing, the permanent supportive housing for the homeless. We're looking at creative ways to accomplish this, and it is our job to balance the needs of everyone, including those affected by homelessness, our businesses, our residents, et cetera. So what we're trying to do is get to the bottom of this case. We're trying to figure out a way forward on this settlement proposal, and then the larger issues affecting how we address this issue while we play catch-up. You know, homelessness crises did not happen overnight. I arrived in Hollywood in 1982, and it was an issue then. So I hope that we can all pull together, regardless of how you feel passionately on one side or another. What I hear in both sides of this argument today is a lot of common themes, believe it or not, because I don't think anyone is so cold-hearted that they want to leave someone without the attention they deserve, no matter how they arrived to the situation that they're in. So what our commitment today is, is to hear the facts of the matter. The facts in any legal proceeding matter more than anything in terms of our particular decision for any proposed settlement, and that's what we'll get to the bottom of today. We'll communicate clearly exactly the rationale on what led to our decision once we make it. So, thank you, Mr. President, and with that, I think we can start our session.
Now, again, I want to thank everybody for coming. We're going to clear the chambers so that we can have our closed session conversation.
the big top, once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt, and I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild, and they're endangered species, and it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
...provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert L.A. County...
...gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
...or near my park.
Alert L.A. County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert L.A. County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozart at 7:30. So let's do this thing.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And the Writers Guild Award goes to Bo Burnham for eighth grade.
To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars, losers. No. This is obviously wonderful, and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
And where's your favorite place to write here?
I just said home, in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch.
Huh, I haven't seen that yet.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance, it has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take about 155 knots.
It's a very good basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical, long-term investments for the safety of the people
I'd like to say welcome to Bob Baker Day, and I'm really glad you're here, and I'm meeting a lot of really funny friends today.
It's been a full-on, day-on festival of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just
The Globe Trippers, we're known as the ambassadors of goodwill. So we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact, and we found that the number-one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying, and so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? You know, somebody bullied you?
Yes.
Why you bully him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our
Not it.
Not it.
Again?
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it.
The Recycle Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily... The Recycle Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work and exemplary adoption of the Recycle program.
I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused.
Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide.
Today, we're unveiling their solar panel installation. They're actually going to feed into DWP's grid, and you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy.
We use privately-owned rooftops, and people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop, and then that energy is fed back into the grid, so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top once they've become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt and I don't know what to do with that hurt, and I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild and they're endangered species. And it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30, so let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And the Writers Guild Award goes to Bo Burnham for 8th grade.
To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars, losers. No. This is obviously wonderful and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
Where's your favorite place to write here?
Just at home, in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
Write what you would want to watch.
Huh, I haven't seen that yet. I'm gonna write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance, it has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take, about 155 knots.
It's a very good basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical, long-term investments for the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
I'd like to say welcome to Bob Baker Day, and I'm really glad you're here and I'm meeting a lot of really fun friends today.
It's been a full-on day on festival, of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
The Globe Trotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill, so we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact. And we found that the number one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying, and so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? You know, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our U.
Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
The Recycle Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work and exemplary adoption of the Recycle program.
I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused.
Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide.
Today, we're unveiling their solar panel installation. They're actually going to feed into DWP's grid, and you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy.
We use privately-owned rooftops, and people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop, and then that energy is fed back into the grid, so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt. And I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild, and they're endangered species. And it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family... ...provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30. So, let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And... The Writers Guild Award goes to... Bo Burnham, for 8th grade. To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars, losers. No. This is obviously wonderful, and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
And where's your favorite place to write here?
Just at home, in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch. Ha, I haven't seen that yet, I'm gonna write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance. It has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take about 155 knots.
It's a very good basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical, long-term investments for the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
I'd like to say, "Welcome to Bob Baker Day", and I'm really glad you're here, and I'm meeting a lot of really fun friends today.
It's been a full-on day on festival of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
The Globe Trotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill. So, we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact. And we found that the number-one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying. And so, we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? You know, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
The Recycla Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work in exemplary adoption of the Recycla program.
I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused.
Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide.
Today, we're unveiling their solar panel installation. They're actually going to feed into DWP's grid, and you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy.
We use privately-owned rooftops, and people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop. And then, that energy is fed back into the grid so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt. And I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild, and they're endangered species. And it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family... ...provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30. So, let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And... The Writers Guild Award goes to... Bo Burnham, for 8th grade. To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars, losers. No. This is obviously wonderful, and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
And where's your favorite place to write here?
Just at home, in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch. Ha, I haven't seen that yet, I'm gonna write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance. It has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take about 155 knots.
It's a very good basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical, long-term investments for the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
I'd like to say welcome to Bob Baker Day, and I'm really glad you're here, and I'm meeting a lot of really fun friends today.
It's been a full-on day on festival, of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
The Globetrotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill, so we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact. And we found that the number-one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying, and so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? You know, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Not it, not it.
Again?
Hey, Dad.
Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
The Recycle Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work and exemplary adoption of the Recycle program.
I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused.
Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide.
Today, we're unveiling their solar power installation. They're actually going to feed into DWP's grid, and you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy.
We use privately-owned rooftops, and people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop. And then that energy is fed back into the grid, so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top, once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt, and I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild, and they're endangered species, and it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30, so let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And... The Writers Guild Award goes to Bo Burnham for 8th grade.
To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars, losers. No. This is obviously wonderful, and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
And where's your favorite place to write here?
I just said home, in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch. Ha, I haven't seen that yet. I'm gonna write that.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30, so let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And... The Writers Guild Award goes to Bo Burnham for 8th grade.
To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars, losers. No. This is obviously wonderful, and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
And where's your favorite place to write here?
I just said home, in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch. Ha, I haven't seen that yet. I'm gonna write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance, it has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take, about 155 knots.
It's a very good basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical, long-term investments for the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
I'd like to say welcome to Bob Baker Day, and I'm really glad you're here, and I'm meeting a lot of really fun friends today.
It's been a full-on day on festival, of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
The Globetrotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill, so we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact. And we found that the number-one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying, and so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? You know, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Not it, not it. Again?
Hey, Dad.
Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
Not it, not it. The Recycla Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work and exemplary adoption of the Recycla Program. I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused. Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide. Today, we're unveiling their solar power installation. They're actually going to feed into DWP's grid, and you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy. We use privately-owned rooftops, and people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop, and then that energy is fed back into the grid so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top, once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt and I don't know what to do with that hurt, and I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild and they're endangered species, and it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30, so let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And the Writers Guild Award goes to Bo Burnham for 8th grade. To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars, losers. No. This is obviously wonderful and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
And where's your favorite place to write here?
Just at home in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch.
Huh, I haven't seen that yet. I'm gonna write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B-3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance. It has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take about 155 knots.
It's a very good basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical, long-term investments for the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
I'd like to say welcome to Bob Baker Day, and I'm really glad you're here, and I'm meeting a lot of really fun friends today.
It's been a full-on day on festival of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
The Gold Charters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill, so we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact, and we found that the number one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying, and so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? You know, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Not it, not it.
Again?
Hey Dad.
Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
The Recycla Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work and exemplary adoption of the Recycla I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled Program. I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused. and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused. Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide. and wide. Today, we're unveiling their solar power installation. They're actually going to feed into DWP's grid, and you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy. We use privately-owned rooftops, and people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop, and then that energy is fed back into the grid so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt. And I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild, and they're endangered species. And it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family... ...provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30. So, let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And...
The Writers Guild Award goes to...
Bo Burnham, for 8th grade. To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars losers. No. This is obviously wonderful, and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing. And where's your favorite place to write here in LA?
Just at home, in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch. Huh, I haven't seen that yet, I'm gonna write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B-3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance. It has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take about 155 knots.
It's a very good, basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical, long-term investments for the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
I'd like to say, "Welcome to Bob Baker Day", and I'm really glad you're here, and I'm meeting a lot of really fun friends today.
It's been a full-on, day-on festival of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
The Globe Charters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill. So, we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact. And we found that the number-one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying. And so, we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? You know, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Not it, not it.
Again?
Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
The Recycle Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work in exemplary adoption of the Recycle program.
I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused.
Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide.
Today, we're unveiling their solar power installation. They're actually going to feed into DWP's grid, and you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy.
We use privately-owned rooftops, and people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop. And then, that energy is fed back into the grid so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt. And I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild, and they're endangered species. And it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future... To plan for my family... ...provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30. So, let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And...
The Writers Guild Award goes to...
Bo Burnham, for 8th grade. To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars losers. No. This is obviously wonderful, and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing. And where's your favorite place to write here in LA?
Just at home, in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch. Huh, I haven't seen that yet, I'm gonna write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance. It has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take, about 155 knots.
It's a very good basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical, long-term investments for the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
I'd like to say welcome to Bob Baker Day, and I'm really glad you're here, and I'm meeting a lot of really fun friends today.
It's been a full-on day on festival, of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
The Gold Trotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill, so we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact, and we found that the number-one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying, and so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? No, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey, Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
The Recycle Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work and exemplary adoption of the Recycle program.
I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused.
Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide.
Today, we're unveiling their solar panel installation. They're actually going to feed into DWP's grid, and you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy.
We use privately-owned rooftops, and people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop, and then that energy is fed back into the grid so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top, once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state. New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt, and I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild, and they're endangered species, and it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozart at 7:30, so let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And the Writers Guild Award goes to Bo Burnham for 8th grade.
To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars, losers. No. This is obviously wonderful, and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
And where's your favorite place to write here?
Just at home, in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch.
Huh, I haven't seen that yet. I'm gonna write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance. It has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take, about 155 knots.
It's a very good basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical, long-term investments for the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
I'd like to say welcome to Bob Baker Day, and I'm really glad you're here, and I'm meeting a lot of really fun friends today.
It's been a full-on day on festival, of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
The Gold Trotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill, so we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact, and we found that the number-one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying, and so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? No, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey, Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it.
The Recycle Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work and exemplary adoption of the Recycle Program.
I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused.
Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide.
Today, we're unveiling their solar panel installation. They're actually going to fit into DWP's grid, and you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy.
We use privately-owned rooftops, and people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop, and then that energy is fed back into the grid so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top, once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt and I don't know what to do with that hurt, and I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild and they're endangered species, and it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30, so let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And the Writers Guild Award goes to Bo Burnham for 8th grade.
To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars losers. No, this is obviously wonderful and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
And where's your favorite place to write here?
Just at home in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch.
Huh, I haven't seen that yet. I'm gonna write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance. It has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take about 155 knots.
It's a very good basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical, long-term investments for the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
I'd like to say, "Welcome to Bob Baker Day," and I'm really glad you're here, and I'm meeting a lot of really fun friends today.
It's been a full-on day on festival, of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
The Globetrotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill, so we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact, and we found that the number one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying, and so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? No, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy? I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it.
The Recycle Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work and exemplary adoption of the Recycle Program.
I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused.
Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide.
Today, we're unveiling their solar panel installation. They're actually going to fit into DWP's grid, and you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy.
We use privately-owned rooftops, and people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop, and then that energy is fed back into the grid so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area. for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt. And I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild and they're endangered species. And it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30. So, let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And... The Writers Guild Award goes to... Bo Burnham for 8th grade. To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars, losers. No. This is obviously wonderful, and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
And where's your favorite place to write here?
I just at home in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch. Huh, I haven't seen that yet. I'm going to write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance. It has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take about 155 knots.
It's a very good, basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical, long-term investments for the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
I'd like to say, "Welcome to Bob Baker Day", and I'm really glad you're here and I'm meeting a lot of really fun friends today.
It's been a full-on, day-on festival of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
The Globetrotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill. So, we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact. And we found that the number-one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying. And so, we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? No, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
The Recycle Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work and exemplary adoption of the Recycle program.
I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused.
Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide.
Today, we're unveiling their solar power installation. They're actually going to feed into DWP's grid, and you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy.
We use privately-owned rooftops, and people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop. And then, that energy is fed back into the grid so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt. And I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild and they're endangered species. And it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30. So, let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And... The Writers Guild Award goes to... Bo Burnham for 8th grade. To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars, losers. No.
No. This is obviously wonderful, and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
And where's your favorite place to write here?
Just at home in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch. Ha, I haven't seen that yet. I'm gonna write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance. It has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take, about 155 knots.
It's a very good basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical long-term investments for the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
I'd like to say welcome to Bob Baker Day, and I'm really glad you're here, and I'm meeting a lot of really fun friends today.
It's been a full-on day on festival, of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
The Globetrotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill, so we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact. And we found that the number one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying, and so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? You know, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Not it, not it. Again? Hey Dad. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California, and it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
The Recycle Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work and exemplary adoption of the Recycle Program.
I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused.
Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide.
Today, we're unveiling their solar panel installation. They're actually going to feed into DWP's grid, and you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy.
We use privately-owned rooftops, and people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop. And then that energy is fed back into the grid, so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top, once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt, and I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild, and they're endangered species. And it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family... Provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30, so let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And the Writers Guild Award goes to Bo Burnham for 8th grade.
To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars losers. No. This is obviously wonderful, and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
And where's your favorite place to write here?
Just at home in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch. Ha, I haven't seen that yet. I'm gonna write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance. It has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take, about 155 knots.
It's a very good basic platform for law enforcement and media function.
These are all really critical long-term investments for the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
I'd like to say welcome to Bob Baker Day, and I'm really glad you're here, and I'm meeting a lot of really fun friends today.
It's been a full-on day on festival, of fun, of puppets, of games, of food, of just a good time.
The Globetrotters were known as the ambassadors of goodwill, so we go into a community, it's not just about basketball, it's also about having a positive impact. And we found that the number one complaint students have in school today is that there's too much bullying, and so we want to do our part to help with that.
You okay, man? You know, somebody bullying you?
Yes.
Why you bullying him? He a nice guy. I mess with you, I mess with you.
We can come together as a community to really solve the issues that surround our youth.
Not it, not it. Again? Say that. Dad.
There are other ways of saving money and energy around your house. Did you know that LADWP is now offering cash rebates for you to retrofit your home to be more energy and water efficient? It's good for California. And it's good for Dad. Let's make California a better place to live, starting with our homes. To get your rebates, go to www.ladwp.com/save.
Not it, not it.
The Recycla Star Award is a program through which we recognize business establishments, commercial multifamily, that have done exemplary work in exemplary adoption of the Recycla Program.
I'd like to acknowledge everybody that takes the time to sort what can be recycled and put it in the proper recycling bin so that it can be reused.
Through examples like theirs, we know that the practice is going to spread far and wide.
Today, we're unveiling their solar panel installation. They're actually going to feed into DWP's grid. And you're going to be able to produce 2.8 megawatts of energy, of clean energy.
We use privately owned rooftops. And people develop a solar installation on the rooftop, but it's larger than a home rooftop. And then that energy is fed back into the grid, so we can serve it to all of our customers. And this program, the project here today, will feed enough energy for about 1,000 families in this area.
Consumers are having a harder and harder time justifying the fun of cotton candy under the big top, once they become aware of the heartless abuses that go into getting a wild animal to succumb to doing unnatural parlor tricks in the center ring.
We'd be the third state, New Jersey, Hawaii came before us, so it's time.
I get so hurt, and I don't know what to do with that hurt. And I guess this is one of the things to do with it.
I always get emotional because, you know, there's more tigers in captivity than there are left in the wild, and they're endangered species. And it's crazy to be torturing the last of their kind. They live and die solely to entertain someone else, and they never had a choice.
Having the foresight to plan for my business.
To plan for my future.
To plan for my family provides a peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County.
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home.
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
I have a reservation at Mozza at 7:30. So let's do this thing.
Bradley.
I wish you could all win, but you can't.
And the Writers Guild Award goes to Bo Burnham for 8th grade.
To the other nominees in the category, have fun at the Oscars, losers. Now, this is obviously wonderful, and I'm very privileged to do all of this, but, you know, the real joy for me is just writing.
Where's your favorite place to write here?
Just at home, in my bed. I like to write lying down in my bed.
There you go.
Write what you would want to watch. Huh, I haven't seen that yet. I'm gonna write that.
Well, it's the new version of the Airbus B3, which just came off the assembly line. It's a new aircraft to our fleet. It has more performance. It has a higher carrying capacity, a larger fuel tank, and it has a top speed, give or take about 155 knots.
Mr. Bloomfield.
I'd like to announce that Public Works Committee will be canceled this afternoon. We've already passed the time of it. Critical item will be waived. Everything else will take up at the next hearing.
Thank you.
So Public Works canceled.
So you've continued all the items on the next agenda.
I'd like to announce that PAU Committee will be moved to 245.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're back in open session. Go on, Mr. City Attorney.
So by attended to vote, the council voted to authorize the city attorney's office
to settle the Mitchell case. Item number 18.
And let's refer 19 back to committee. Okay, so...
And that would be the Homelessness and Poverty Committee.
Yes. All right, let's go to general public comment. Mr., could you guys remove the rope? Mr. Spindler, you have one minute?
I tried to. But that's what happens, right?
You mean they voted to settle it? What a bunch of fucking pussies.
One moment. Start his time.
What a bunch of pussies. Jesus Christ. We've been waiting all fucking day. We look at Jose Wezar. He took the money and promised they would not settle that case, that they would go to trial and remove these homeless and filth balls off of all of the DTLA and D-Lon properties. You lied, Jose Wezar. And the reason you lied is because you're scared of the FBI. You fucking pussy with your little beard, yes. Little fucking pussy. But I think very much, thank you Councilmember Smith for voting no on the stupid fucking bullshit. And thank you Joe Buscagno for voting no on this bullshit. We know that the vote was 10 to 2, and you were the two no votes. You gentlemen, stand up for property owners. I say fuck everything. Craig Smith were mad, and Herb Wesson were prison.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Your time is over. Okay, I'm looking at the folk in the audience. Is anybody here to speak that didn't speak? Okay, then that closes general public comment. Where are we?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted, they are referred. All rise for adjourning motions. All rise. I'm looking to my right side. I don't see any adjourning motions to my right. I'm looking to my left. I don't see any. This meeting is adjourned.